Okay, welcome everyone and I will call the meeting to order at seven oh one PM on Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty five.
Wow.
So, we have consent agenda items. Does anyone on the board feel it would be necessary to pull any of these out for discussion separately? No, okay. So, we've got the minutes of December sixteenth, two thousand twenty four school board meeting. General fund vouchers and purchasing card transactions request approval of general fund vouchers, one eight three zero two zero through one eight three one seven four and two nine three one four six through two nine three one seven nine and purchasing card transactions dated eleven twenty one twenty four through twelve twenty twenty four. We have some professional staffing recommendations and some co-curricular staffing recommendations. If everyone approves of any, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda item.
I can make that motion.
May ma'am.
I can second it.
Thank you Bruce. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five zero. We also have some professional staffing recommendations that there's no vote necessary. Angie, do we have any public comments?
No, we have not been registered.
Okay. Then we will move along to McFarland High School Student Report.
It does not look like we have any students during this time.
Okay, so we will move on to informational items first being the district equity update and that will be our
Thank you.
Coordinator Brittany Brazel and District Administrator Erin Tarnsir. Welcome Brittany.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Oh, I think the students are here.
It's important. It is. We want to watch that, heck yeah.
Alright, I think we're going to back up here, it looks as though we do indeed have a high school student report this evening. Welcome to whomever is out there.
And you're muted.
There we are.
There we are.
It's okay, it's the cold.
No worries.
I blame everything on the cold.
And MHS advising night, which you guys probably know about. It's going to be on February fifth from four to seven and there will be an advising night with tons of different businesses in college stands as well as informational sessions in the PAC. There's over fifty different businesses in colleges. Athletics update. So, there's going to be a pink out for cancer on January twenty fifth at seven PM and it's a hockey game for boys varsity where they will fundraise for cancer research and as you can tell from the name, you're supposed to wear all pink. Some of the sports, these are mostly from break because I have not seen that many sports since then. And girls' basketball competed well at their holiday tournament over the break playing DeForest and Middleton and competed well against conference opponent Reedsburg. Boys' basketball had a nice non-conference win over Monroe during the holiday break and a nice conference win over Stoughton two Fridays ago. Boys' hockey, congratulations for taking first place in their holiday tournament in the Dallas over break and they had a thrilling shootout win in the championship game versus Baldwin Woodville. Girls' hockey had a tough loss to the Badger Light Lighting but came back over break and had a very good win over Northland Pines. Boys' wrestling took fifth overall at the Badger State Invite over break and some wrestlers finished in the top five. They also took sixth at Mid States over the break. Girls' wrestling took fifth overall at the Badger State Invite over break and some wrestlers finished in the top five. Boys' swimming had a very strong performance over the break and two Saturdays ago. They took second place at the Verona Invite over break, set multiple meet records and also took third place at the Marquette Invitational, again setting meet records. MHS Dance had some dancers perform at the Citrus Bowl over the break, which was a great experience for them. And thank you, any questions? Very, very brief today.
Do you know offhand how many females we have participating in the wrestling program?
In wrestling?
Yeah.
I only know of one at McFarland High School, but I think they're in a co-op of some sort.
I think the co-op.
Huh?
I was just curious if, how many participants we had.
Oh, just one.
Abby, do you know if any of the MHS dancers at the Citrus Bowl got any television time?
I do not know. Wish I did. Hopefully. I think so. But I'm not sure.
Oh yeah, like, like they bring in dancers from all over the state and, yeah, or all over the country, it's, it's a lot.
Also, you have The advisory night coming up. I just want to share, and you can share this with seniors also, both the Optimists and the Lions Clubs will be there. Provide information about their scholarships to graduating seniors. So if they want to stop by the tables, they're certainly welcome to do so.
Anybody else got anything for? If not, thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Have a good week and we'll see you in a couple, a couple weeks, three weeks, I guess.
Okay, have a good night, thank you.
Thank you Brittany.
Yeah, no, that's awesome.
Erin, go right ahead.
Cool. So with annual equity update, things that have been going on in the district for the last year. We have a couple changes and then I'm just going to hit some highlights of some big things that have been going on. So, what guides our work, we had the educational equity resolution and policy that we kind of rewrote in last year, so that is always guiding our work. Strategic plan and then new this year, one of the things that I was tasked with last year was making some goals for us for long range. Kind of connected to the strategic plan as well, so those are in there, we're already starting to collect some data on it and track that. So, a big culture of learning, DEIB specific is one of our goals. Enhance staff professional development, what we offer and then how staff receive that. And then improve student learning and instructional experiences and that is really connected to the strategic plan. And then we'll use surveying for students in the spring to get that data. So it's just really cool to have these goals finally hammered out and able to kind of for sure guide what I'm doing, but also for what the district is doing. We want to flip to the next page. We'll get into some highlights and again, these are just like the big things. Clearly, there's tons of awesome stuff happening everywhere that I don't even know about. So that's good too, but this, this is just big stuff. District Equity Coordination and Leadership. So, the big thing for me last year was to get those goals and that long range plan for how we're going to increase professional learning, DEIB specific. So that's happening, it's starting, we're already starting to trickle in some of that professional development this year. So that feels really nice and it's aligned with kind of what I'm working with Melissa on in terms of high quality instruction and things with staff as well. So, we're taking a lot of what used to be a separate equity pillar and we're now merging it into as many things as humanly possible, so it just becomes like part of what we do. Student voice and leadership, we have awesome students here, no question about it. We offer tons of clubs, tons of activities for the kids, we added new ones last year, so that's happening. And then I like to spend a lot of time getting those clubs to then engage with other parts of the district. So, we've got, you know, high school kids going to CEPS for assemblies, we've had them help out with the middle school courage retreat. Last year they did a book tour, they're starting to do a book tour again this year. We've had a lot of mentorship type things that happened last year that we want to systematize this year so that we get the older kids down to the lower levels. We're working on planning the second annual equity picnic for the spring. We've got many united against hate unity summit, we hosted that last year, we're going to host it again this year. And then we have students from that club help support that day, so that's coming up. We are also going to have our culture week again, which will be in the spring and we're going to start organizing that here in a couple weeks. So again, our student leaders are out here getting things done. Our next box, a big kind of task for me when I first started was harmful language and hate speech and so we've really hit the ground running with that. We started by just picking a tool, what we're, what are we, what are we going to use to kind of help train staff and students to interrupt in the moment? So we've gone through, all staff have been trained. We have started building in this speak up tool and learning into student advisory lessons, so three twelve kids have been trained on that. We are starting to see it used when incidents do come up. We are using this language and we are, you know, using it as again, an opportunity to educate kids. This year signage has been a huge deal, so hopefully when you're walking around you see the language up there in the signs, everybody knows that like, hey, we are speaking up here in McFarland. So we will keep going on with that. Family part of that, we held some learning for families last year, we're going to continue to increase that this year and moving forward because again, it's going to take all of us, so we are still heavy with the speaking up tool and learning. In terms of equity specific learning and training for the district, we brought in Dr. Val Brown and Catrice Kettey to help us out this year and so we've had two sessions with them already and then another session coming up in the spring. I'm going to use the goal specifically for the long range plan to help kind of get really specific with our PD learning, DEIB specific, so that will always continue. And then we're also going to start embedding it into kind of our high quality instruction and what we're going to do for our kids in terms of what's happening actually in class. That is also connected to the staff professional development that's happening this year and into the future. This year we focus really heavy on wellbeing for all, not just for our kids, but for us as the adults as well. And that's going fantastically this year. Lots of learning and lots of positive feedback about that. We're going to continue with that, but we're also going to narrow down some really specific instructional practices that we're going to kind of tie into that moving forward, so that'll be awesome to include with our equitable multi-level systems of support. And we will, you know, I think a lot of people are like, oh, what happened to culturally sponsored practices? That's still around, it's still happening, we took the greatest from that and we're using that. So it's all, it's all just kind of starting to come together and be really organized. And then our parent equity leadership, our family equity council, which is now our McFarland Schools Equity Collective group, still meets monthly. This year we changed it a little bit because a big message from last year is, well, we want to learn also. And so this year we've been bringing in key people from the district to come and speak on specific things. This Wednesday, we're going to have student service reps from every building come and talk about, you know, what are our roles with student services? How do we support kids? So that's been a huge change this year, which I think is super positive. And as always, they're still providing us feedback and we're still talking and engaging and collaborating, so that's awesome. And then again, these are just the big ones, there's tons of other stuff happening.
That seems like a lot.
Yeah, right? Just a little bit. No, it's been very good.
I have a question about the, some of your long-term goals.
Yeah, yeah.
You were starting to collect the kind of baseline data. So, for the one about the culture of DEI, DEIB
Yup.
So eighty percent of staff, so do you have an idea of what percentage of staff is now? Like regularly interacting with students?
Yes, we're not quite at eighty.
Okay.
But it's not far off. I did link it in here for you, so if you want to take a look at it, because there's a, there's a lot to kind of go through. Because there were some open questions as well, so there's some feedback, just some open ended questions. But yeah, we're getting close, but there is, I mean, giving that out and getting that initial data, it became very clear to me of like, oh, we got to pump the brakes a little bit and get kind of realigned with what is actually DEIB? What does that mean? So, we'll hit that for sure this summer and into next year.
It seems like what you're trying to do is embed DEIB into everything that we're doing. Similar to what we did with technology when it was, when it was introduced to the district. We had standalone goals and then after two or three years, they became embedded.
Yeah.
My que, well, a couple things. My question is, does DE, DEIB, what's the connection between that and the Charlotte Davidson model?
I mean, yeah, it's sprinkled, I mean, it's sprinkled in everywhere, the language is a little bit different. But, I mean, you'd be hard pressed not to find some aspects of DEIB in basically every box. So it's, it's there, yeah, oh, for sure.
What, Tom, or can some, what's the Charlotte Davidson model?
So, Charlotte Davidson is the initial designer of the evaluation model that we use for our teaching staff.
Gotcha.
And so there's specific components and indicators that we're looking for in their instruction. And so what you've seen, and that has actually evolved over time and is much more focused on differentiating instructions, students owning their learning. And that aligns with, you can hear that focus of moving the, this work into what is just part of what we do for all of us all the time because it's best for everyone, so you make a really good point. We just want to define what is best practice and the work that Brittany is part of leading and others as well is just good for all of our kids instead of saying, this is a separate issue, this is for these kids.
That sounds like a great plan. Couple other things, last spring, I think you had a spring equity, uh, speak up? Was that the, in the PAC, it was for the community?
Yup.
Are you going to do something similar this spring?
Yeah, so we got, so there's a video that's out there that's at, it's on our website, so it's kind of for families, they can watch it and walk through the tools, so there's that. Yeah, I would love to do it again, we did one at the beginning of the year with orientation. So, we're trying to get it out there more, now that we've got staff and students, like families, it's that last little piece and then we're all on the same page, but yeah.
And is this something that you could do jointly with the village DEI person?
Potentially.
Trying to get more of the community involved?
Yeah, yeah.
With, you know, presentation like that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, oh, tell us about the spring equity picnic, I know you did it last year?
Yeah.
I can't recall what that all
Yeah, so, last year we held it in the fall. We had some go-getter seniors that were like, I mean, that was probably one of my first meetings of like, this is what we're going to do. We've had seniors graduate and so our younger students are starting to learn what it means to be student leaders. And so we tried to get it going for the fall and logistically, they just weren't ready for that yet. But I very much want them to be the ones that organize, lead, get it together. So we're going to meet next week and we're going to try to get it going again. This group also is very, very much set on, they want to have it outside. So, weather, we're thinking spring into early summer because we miss that, you know, nice fall weather. But, they, they are as determined, it's just, you know, when you're freshman sophomore, you kind of, you need to get through it a little bit, so they're still determined, it's just taking a little longer.
And then my last question is, I know Dekka is very involved with a lot of things here in the district. Do you have any students that are involved with both groups?
Yeah, that's, that's the greatest thing. The majority of our kids are in two or three clubs or activities, so they're hitting all the areas, it's awesome, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Bruce, Angie?
No.
No, it sounds exciting.
Yeah.
It is really good stuff, for sure.
Do you have any significant sort of engagement or, you know, regular communications with the village?
I, yeah, I talk with Crystal, they're DEI. Usually it's kind of just the informal check-in, we're hanging out, we're trying to get more formal, actually starting in a couple weeks, so.
Is that a direction they're looking to go as well?
I think Crystal, yeah, I think Crystal and I are just like, why not? Like it makes sense, so we're going to do it, yeah.
That I would encourage, you know, so that there's, there's little redundancy, I guess, of work and that sort of thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Are certain disciplines within, within this, the district, is it more difficult to embed the DEIB piece than maybe in other, other disciplines, you know, whether it would be a tech ed or a, you know, the English or the math or, are they all basically, this is just, this is going to be our MO from this point forward?
Yeah. I think that, I think they feel that message across the district. I think the biggest struggle is a lot of people are already doing awesome things and they don't even know it. So a lot of it is just like, no, you're already, you're already doing it and helping folks just recognize that it's already happening.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, that's a good problem to have, for sure.
That's a great question, by the way.
Yeah.
And, and this is, you know, just a personal thing with me and it just grates me and that's the, the harmful language and hate speech part. Is that more prevalent than we would like?
I mean, it's happening.
Yeah.
Like, we can't, we can't stop that, it's happening. The change is students are reporting it more, which is what we want, that's a good thing. And they're also starting to advocate more in the moment. So, you know, we're, you know, in years past, they're saying like, oh, well, the adults, we'll handle, we'll handle it, well, we can't because we're not everywhere. And a lot of this stuff is happening, truly, where adults aren't.
Yeah.
And so the kids, they, they are getting it, they are finally speaking up, they know they've got their sentences, they've got their language, what to say, how to say it. So, you know, it'll take time as we develop the culture of like, that's what we want, but it's happening.
It's always, it's always, regardless of your process.
Yeah.
From the time I was in school until today, it's hard to say something
Yeah.
sometimes.
Yup, oh, for sure.
And the fear of retaliation is real.
Yup.
What do we do to try to assure those kids being bullied that it's, it's more important that they speak up? That's more important than the worry of retaliation? But, what do you do to, to kind of assure them?
Yeah.
As best you can, obviously you can't guarantee.
I know, that's the hard part. I think for me, the big thing this year is the signage. So like, the kids see it, like, we're serious about it. We're also, I think quicker now to get the report, start investigating and get the outcome that the kids want because a lot of times it's, I mean, it takes time, we got, we have to investigate and the kids often think, oh, well, they're not even doing anything. Like, I reported this, you know, twenty-four hours ago and it's not resolved, you know? So they're, they're starting to understand the process, which is helpful. But I think overall, they, because it's in their lessons, we're using it when we have consequences and we need to talk to kids, they see it everywhere. So I think they just feel like, oh, okay, it's safe for me to report, I, I, I feel like I can believe that they're going to handle it.
And there are real repercussions
Yes. One hundred percent, yup, for sure. So I think they just, they're feeling it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Kind of empowering the students is really what I'm hoping. And so like, just last week, Brittany, that was the student athlete leadership team?
Yeah, it's student, salt, yes, student athlete leadership team, yeah.
Yeah.
My granddaughter's in it too.
These type of issues and your role as a student athlete leader and how you can influence the culture and expectations within the people, you know, that you're around. So, those are the kind of the things that
Oh, for sure.
Kind of game changers and a long way from when, you know, three years ago when we really tackled this head on here in the district.
Is Salt new this year?
No, last year, I think was the first year, yeah. It was a little late to start this year, but it's going now.
But maybe a year from now? I'd be interested to know what difference has that made?
Yeah.
Salt? In our overall respect and all that.
Well, Bruce, you've actually presented at Salt, haven't you?
Yeah, and I think, and it's probably been renamed in a sense, I mean, I think it's always been there, Tom, it's just, you know, it's probably slightly reconfigured and whatnot. But, it does play such a valuable role, you know?
I have to be honest, I really don't have any idea what the village DEI person is doing.
Oh.
I have fairly good idea what you're doing because you report to the board.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's more publicity really about it.
Yeah.
So I think the more we can do collaboratively, that would help, at least help me
Yeah.
understand what we're doing as a whole community with that. Another thing.
Maybe that, maybe that's an opportunity for the joint.
Maybe, yeah.
Yeah, we could do something like, well, we had officers each month.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah. Another, how do I put this? With the way the political climate is now, the way it has been over the past few short years, the modeling that students see in the media, in the print, social media, how, how are you confronting that? How do you address that? Because that whole norm has shifted now. And it's very difficult for kids, I think, to sort out what's appropriate, what's not appropriate. I mean, they're doing it here, why can't we do it here? How do you address that type of challenge?
Yeah, because it is, and I think for us in McFarland, our biggest thing is just social media in general, coming into the classroom. And so I think for us, we are serious about it, so like, when we start to hear the rumblings of, you know, oh, this saying's going around or this meme or this picture or this video or whatever it may be, we are quick to address it. And then we try to get, we try to get everybody because it spreads so fast. But I think that's again, why I really want to involve families in the community as much as possible because that happens outside of school. Like, we don't, that's not us, it just, we get that secondary effect. But we've had, I mean, we've had some situations in the past year even where we're like, oh my gosh, what's going around right now? From where? And so we're quick to address it because we just want to shut it down before it becomes too big and then we can't. But I think, I mean, we've got a pretty good, we've got a pretty good process, I think, where we can, we can get a hold of it for now.
And then my last question is, what's the level of parental or guardian support for all that you're doing in the district here?
I mean, I think good, I haven't heard anything bad. I don't know if you're blocking anything from me, I don't know, but I think it's super positive. I don't know, but I think it's super positive because again, we're trying to just do what's best for kids. That's it. And that's all kids, so.
Quick question for you. Do you meet with other DEIB coordinators from other districts?
I have a, a couple like webinar things. It's not, it's, somebody will facilitate and then we kinda pop in.
Okay, because I'd just be curious if there was like a collaborative, like quarterly meeting to like bounce ideas off of each other. Especially as like the demographic continues to change within our district.
Yeah.
It might be interesting to.
Yeah, with the other positions, the few that are around Dane County, like, we'll email every once in a while, nothing formal. We don't have a standing meeting, but I think we're ready should something come up and it gets a little reckless and wild.
Yeah.
We at least, we know each other.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, that's good.
The, the time might be now, though.
Yeah.
You know, and again, you can use the McFarland model. You could instigate that and facilitate bringing those people together, even if it's just once a year.
Yep, yep, for sure.
See what the status report is.
Yeah, just to check it, yeah.
Honestly, I'm surprised there isn't.
Yeah, I know. I think low-key, we're trying to stay under the radar a little bit, just to kinda see. But we, we have each other's contacts, we're, at least luckily, we're, we all know each other, so it's good.
Well, because I was just thinking more about the athletic piece of it.
Yeah.
Like, as, like, specifically high school athletes are traveling and they're coming into, you know, different communities that maybe aren't as first into DEIB initiatives as we are.
Yeah.
Um, you know, helping those athletes deal with situations and that kind of thing. Because I mean, we've all heard stories about kids going to other districts and this and that and hate speech and whatnot. And I mean, it's hard to deal with, especially when we might be a little bit more astute at the situation, at least our kids are. And how to, you know, work with other kids who aren't as proficient in like dealing with hate speech and whatnot.
Yep, for sure.
It's hard to accept the lowest comedy denominator, though. You know, and that's what, that's what it is. You know, it's somebody in the stands hollering whatever, or athletes amongst themselves. It doesn't happen often, but it, it has, it has happened here, you know, fairly recently.
You know, I do feel like our, our athletic directors and the event supervisors stepped in quickly.
Yep.
I know that Dr. Verdy, who's the superintendent from Bearaboo, who had previously done quite a good training, kind of pre-speak-up model of similar how to address hate speech here for our district, did speak to all of the Badger Conference athletic directors and talked about these various issues. So it's definitely a commitment among, you know, the athletic directors to make sure that those kind of things don't get said and stands as much as possible.
Yep.
So what we're seeing now is if something is said, it's sort of somewhat under the breath, you know, as two athletes are passing each other and then, you know, teaching athletes that you do need to go over and you do need to have a ref that this happened or tell me. As opposed to larger chants, which do happen from time to time, but haven't happened.
That's been a while.
I mean, I've seen some of the McFarland athletes, there were situations that happened and I did see them address the refs right away and it was handled. So it's nice to see that, you know, our students are handling the situation appropriately.
Yep.
Do we have, so to that end and to help like address the, you know, when we're hosting an event, do we have some of this, the speaks-up signage in the athletic facilities? Like, do we have one that's outside on the, on the track and football field or anything?
Nothing outside, yet.
In locker rooms?
Uh, there should be some in the locker rooms.
Training room?
As you go into the athletic spaces, you should see stuff right outside the big gym. There's one of these big signs.
I mentioned that helps too.
Uh-huh, yep.
Yep, yep.
It's gonna, it's hard.
It's a process.
It takes time, yep, for sure.
Just keep, keep at it.
That's it.
Keep up the great work and make us proud.
That's it.
All right.
Cool, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next. Is, hold on here, I'll get it. Mentor month proclamation. Mr. Tarnitzer, take it away.
Well, on behalf of the board, I would like to acknowledge that this is an important month. It is National Mentoring Month. And so in January, we always like to recognize our amazing mentors that we have here in the district. And a reminder, we have a mentor that works primarily with new to the profession teachers, that's Mark Hoier. And then the remainder of the mentors are within our existing staff and they go above and beyond dedicating time outside of their busy responsibilities.
Almost a hundred.
Yeah, there's a lot, right? Yeah, but so for new staff, they stay with them for the, the first three years. And then for new to us, veteran staff is here with them for at least a year. So I will read this proclamation on behalf of all of you because you're gonna sign this. Whereas research and our own experiences underscore the power of the relationship between good teaching and student learning. And whereas we believe that learning to teach well is a career-long developmental process with student achievement at its core. And whereas the challenges of new teachers result in documented and significant turnover within the first year of teaching when there is no induction support. And whereas quality teachers who receive induction support, including times they qualified mentor, are more than twice as likely to stay with our schools positively impacting student learning and school culture, maintaining program coherence and maximizing use of district resources. And whereas about one hundred veteran teachers from the school district of McFarland are trained as mentors and together offer over seven hundred hours of individual classroom-based professional development to the new teachers who join our school community each year. And whereas, Farland's new teacher induction mentor committee works tirelessly to support the work of our mentors and encourage the growth of all of our new staff. Now therefore, the members of McFarland School Award, that's all of you, do hereby proclaim January two thousand twenty-five as National Mentoring Month in McFarland and call upon our staff and community members to recognize the importance and celebrate the contribution of our mentors and to look for opportunities to serve as mentors to others in their own lives. And the witness thereof, you will sign this on this the thirteenth day of January. Yeah, so it's just, it's, we're really proud of our program. It's grown and evolved over time. And you talk about our, our staff retention and I think that's one of the reasons why our staff retention is so high.
Erin, what's the percentage of staff that are mentors in our district versus Manona, Stoughton, Sumpfri?
I don't, I don't have.
Things, one hundred seems like a good number. I mean, we only have less than four hundred staff members.
Right.
Well, far less teachers still, so it seems to be very high.
Mentors, so it means they've gone through the training to learn how to be a mentor and they're just like, yeah, all right.
An, you know, anecdotal evidence has always indicated that we're, this district is a frontrunner in terms of their mentoring program and how long we've been doing it and how successful it's been over the years. And Erin couldn't be more, more correct. That's a, there's a direct correlation between retention and how you treat your teachers on the front end, how you prepare them.
I, I, I think it's also a reflection at the level of support that the board has provided to the mentoring program. Specifically financial support so it can go on. But also Mark Hoier.
Yes.
He's been in that position, he's excellent. You know, I, I sense many of the new teachers stay because of him. Some of it, I mean, a lot of them stay because of the team that's around and all that, so.
Yeah, we are very, very fortunate.
Yeah.
And also, as, as we stated in the proclamation, recognizing the mentor committee for the leadership that they provide. So those are, again, staff that have volunteered to help lead the mentor work for the district. And that voice is so important because, you know, we could at the district office do our best to design a program without that, you know, on the ground perspective, that wouldn't meet the needs of our new staff.
What's really nice is that they're spread out across the whole district, so they don't necessarily have to go from the building to see their mentor.
Okay, anything else?
Well, before we.
Go ahead.
Erin, where do you see the mentoring program in five years?
I don't know, you know, I haven't really thought about that. I really love what we're doing, so I don't really see it changing, to be honest, that much. I don't know that we need to grow it as much as we need to sustain what we are doing. That's my biggest fear, is when money gets tight, you know, that, those are the things that people start to cut. You know, we, we greatly underpay our mentors. I will say that publicly. I wish we could pay them more, they do great for it. But those are the things I think that people start. So to be honest, I'd like, in five years, I'd like to see pretty close to what we're doing right now. A lot of teacher voice and a lot of teacher leadership and Mark.
Well, didn't have the fault to you somehow.
Yeah, someone's.
Isn't that wonderful? Outstanding. Notice of educational options for Wisconsin Act fifty-five, section one-one-eight dot five-seven. I'm going to assume that Mr. Tarnitzer's got something to say about this as well.
Sure. You do this every year. What it is, is this is, is published on our, our website. We just kind of share these educational options with you. What this document that you have in front of you talks about our, you know, we obviously serve kids through four K through twelve grade, leading to high school diploma. Talks about our school report card rating, which of course exceeds expectation, including those for each school. And then it talks about some of the many specific educational programs that are provided to our students. You know, early childhood, special education, for example, special education for students with disabilities, English language learner education, advanced learner services, career and technical education or CTE programs, youth sponsorship program, individualized programming, critical modifications, alternative education programs, at-risk education, for those who are at risk of not graduating from high school, summer school program. So, you know, I think that is just a, a touch on some of the many great things that, that we can do. Our report card is on our, our website as well. And then there's a bunch of stuff on, on the second page related to, to that and enrollment and open enrollment. Early college credits and all those extra things. So it's just something to notice the board, just to make sure that you're aware of some of the things that we offer.
Anybody have any concerns, comments, questions?
Little comment I would have is I think.
It's, uh, behooves us to be familiar with all those different options. So as we're talking about to the community, parents, servants, just remind them that these are different options available to them.
I think it's a good point, especially, you know, in referendum, you know, times.
Right.
You know, you can say like, these, these are all the things that we offer to our students. I don't think anybody would think that they weren't valuable.
And in some ways, it's a goal beyond what you think of the school. I mean, we're just, it makes us truly a community school.
Are there, I wa, I'm just, I don't know, we need an answer to this, but I wonder if, um, if there are any benchmark statistics about how a district of our size offering these programs? Like, if there, if other districts of our same size offers similar programs? Because it feels like we do a lot for our learners, so I wonder if there, if it has the same.
Yeah, I would agree. You know, I don't know if there's any way to quantify it. When we look at, we went down and broke down those programs in terms of, huh, you know, how we serve people, how well we serve them. And you look at our youth sponsorship numbers, you know, being the highest in the county and certainly aren't the largest district. So those are examples that I think speak to, we're not just doing what everybody's doing.
But most of these are required of school districts to provide options, but how we implement them.
It's the over and above that separates us, I think. Certainly, we really do. And, and, you know, any, any data that I've seen, any reports that I get, it's very, very rare that there's any negative issues. I think, I think the district is just, it's a positive district that chooses to educate their students in a positive way and in a positive environment. And I, I think that's, that's a credit to our school leadership.
And you have the right people in the right places.
Correct.
And historically, we've always done this. We've always been a leader. We always promote. I, what large schools are doing, but for a small school, it's really special.
Well, I was gonna say this little accolade for, during your report, but I was actually a judge at the DECA thing over the weekend.
Isn't that fun?
Oh, it's so fun. And the kids are so cute and they're all dressed up in suits and it's adorable. But, like, in the beginning, you sit amongst tables and you chat with each other and people found out. I was from McFarland and so many teachers were, and like, other, you know, professionals within, um, schools were like, you guys are doing such a great job. We're so jealous of everything you're doing there. Like, they were just raving and raving. And so kudos to everyone in this room and the administration and all of our staff because, like, other, other schools are noticing it, other districts are noticing it. And we bring a lot to the table for our kids and I think it's something we should be really proud of.
That's, that's absolutely true. That's really one of the reasons that I enjoy going to these conventions so much.
Yeah.
I always leave feeling reinforced that we're doing things properly. Because other districts, and not even necessarily just these fourteen, you know, in our Dane County sort of bubble, McFarland is, is highly thought of in, in a lot of different areas that, I don't know, that too many people here are even aware that others are noticing.
Yeah.
Yep, that's great.
And they do. They, the, the coal nominations that we get every single year, all of the, all of these kind of nominations for higher accolades and, and we're just really lucky.
And historically, again, what I'm most proud of in this school system and this district is that we've never become complacent. It's just like, okay, now what more can we do? And that's just kind of the attitude. And that's, because you don't want to be complacent. The whole idea with Brittany just presenting and the mentor program, we just keep, what can we do to make it better? And I'm just really proud of that.
If you pay attention to who, putting people in, in a role that best utilizes their strengths. And I think we're pretty good at that.
Let's keep it up.
Seems like we put people in a position to succeed rather than a position to fail.
Yep.
Okay, shall we move on?
We shall.
School safety written drill evaluation notification and review per Wisconsin State Statute one-one-eight dot zero-seven-four C P. Okay, uh, are you gonna handle this one, Erin?
Sure.
Those are unbelievable too.
Yes, we do too. We had a, a medical hold at the middle school and another hold at Wabisa. A reminder, those are used, you know, we use an administrative hold, it's used for a lot of reasons and mostly it is really to protect the privacy of the students. Sometimes staff involved, whether it be a, a medical situation or some other crisis, and to protect their privacy. So keeping other students out of the area. So both done very well and executed. And one of the things you'll see in these are sort of a, a, a modified process. Instead of having the whole school be an administrative hold, just areas that you need to, to, to put in that. And, and it can be done very informally, even without a, an announcement on the public address system.
And the dates those happened are just, that made my mind blank.
One of the things I, I very useful are the lessons learned.
So next time they do it, they've made some modification of some kind.
Yeah, it's a really well-designed form.
It is. I like it.
I have any credit for that. It's preemie.
Any questions? Comments?
No.
Yeah.
District administrators report. Mr. Tarnitzer.
All right, I have exciting news. We received a, another grant, this one for four thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars, roughly. All right, exciting news. We received a, another grant, this one for four thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars roughly. Roughly. Yeah, really.
No sense.
No pennies? No, yeah, no sense.
I'm just telling you a lot of that. A grant from DPI to support our robotics team. So thank you, you and the robotics team. And that allows them to participate in the robotics competition, which can be very costly. Okay, so they rolled back grant and received that.
So the robotics team students and.
Advisor.
Thank you.
It's the cold, it's the cold, it's the cold.
Okay.
And making a job.
Making a job.
That's true.
I bring a little sheet today.
Okay, and they're invited. So they wrote their request for the grant and then were granted.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm sure that Mr. Tarnitzer is the primary author, but.
Have you had a little help?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, in their practice, they've got stuff right in their room.
It has some pretty neat stuff.
It's really fun to see.
Was the grant for a specific emol, Erin, or is that what they just see?
That's, they asked for more and that's, you know, when they start dividing up the pie, that's what part of the pie.
That's probably how it typically goes.
Yeah, that's a pretty big piece of pie.
It is.
It's sweet, it's nice. And we're moving on. We have, you know, in it, still in its infancy as an esports program as well. And I think, I believe the district invested in some higher-end esports kind of computers. Is that right, Jeff?
Yes, the library and common school fund helped with that because the computer are also used in the day in the library.
P S files for everyone? I'm just kidding.
Probably not.
No.
I also wanted to just, just recognize our amazing employee relations committee and all, some of you are involved directly in that work. We have subgroups from there looking at insurance, we're looking at handbook changes. The collaboration is really great. You know, we have a, we're one group, we're all together for all the meetings. We don't have a support staff group and then a professional staff group. We're all one group and so just really pleased and proud of the collaboration.
It just feels, it feels better.
Honestly, you should make those meetings longer. Like, there's so much information that is shared, you know? I know it's hard to make them longer since it's already extended the workday. But I mean, in the last meeting, we probably could have that for another forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
I mean, even so, I was the last one out of the room. Because, you know, I love to chat, but.
No.
It's about leaving them wanting more.
Yeah, like, it was, it was a good meeting, even though we were talking about health insurance.
They all are.
Yeah.
They really are. It's a real productive way for it to be across the, across the district. You're not dealing with, you know, individual building type issues and it's, it just feels good. You know, when you can come to consensus, when you know you have all the right people in the room.
Yeah, Erin and I were talking about this last week, I think, but with the, I especially love serving on that committee because it, it gives such a broad view of what the, the staff in all the different roles covered there are experiencing. And like it was, as, you know, I was doing that in my first couple of years as a school board member and it was a really great way to learn just how everything fits together and then to get to know some of the staff. And I mean, I kind of think we should all take turns on that, like a rotation or something, because it's just a really great.
Great idea.
Committee to serve on.
Funny you say that, because I miss it this year.
Mm-hmm, same, same.
So once again, this is a really good example of how this has evolved over time. I know Jeff has been primarily the facilitator, historically speaking, so it's ended up very well.
Yeah, something to be proud of.
Mm-hmm, it is. It's another model out there worth sharing with other districts.
Yeah, and we have our, our next meeting is scheduled and clear where we're going and give that timeline to get an updated handbook to you. Wanted to just recognize everyone involved in our, in our safety work. You know, the tragedy at one, like, Christian School has got people asking a lot of really thoughtful questions, looking at things within a new set of eyes. And our safety committee will be meeting coming up soon to just do a little debrief on lessons that we'll learn, just as we did after the Maukora incident. So just really pleased with the amount of collaboration. Just this afternoon, I was able to attend a staff meeting with that kind of elderly and primary school, talking about safety with Officer Spitzman and our safety coordinator, Michael Metz and, and Greg Nelson and for culture to do a job facilitating that and getting questions and concerns out from the staff. Unfortunately, we have to do these things, but we continue to grow and be a better.
I had a, just a question, how, I, I wasn't, I guess, aware of how, how long they were off school? You know, after, after the event, I, it's still front of mind, but I had just assumed after a few days, they would go back to school.
How long were they?
It was a couple of weeks.
They just went back this week.
Plus it fell in the winter break, too. Yeah.
I'm just wondering, and how, how would obviously a catastrophic situation like that be handled in terms of meeting your requirements with the PPI, you know, with education time and, you know, those questions?
You'd end up getting a waiver.
I figured that that was probably true, but.
Happened in another school, the state of Wisconsin, so.
Yeah, they just, they just create a waiver.
Yeah.
They did come back, people were able to come back a few days after the incident, reminder it's a crime scene. So eventually people were able to come back and get their items that they had left behind. And that was kind of a, probably a nice first step for people and that was right before break, I believe, we even did a, that spell.
I think I also read that they received a donation from a community member to put metal detectors out there. At least that was in a story that I read about the problems with going back.
Yeah, I, if that's accurate, I don't know if someone else had donated for the, a full-time armed staff member to, they worked.
It has to. You know, if you're going to have a metal detector, you need to have a certain, well, a certain kind of staff there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ain't talk about it either.
Just appreciated, appreciative for that and we continue to learn. Also wanted to recognize our equitable multi-level systems to support district committee. They continue to meet, working on many of the things that Brittany was talking about with our what is high quality tier one instruction. And that's really funded by our strategic plan and, and with academic excellence and focusing on those gaps, particularly in the jersey. A little bit, Brittany mentioned about the McFarland Schools Equity Collective. It was really interesting that Paul Echley, our athletic director, spoke to them a couple of meetings ago, I think it was now, and just shared some a little bit about the athletic program. I think we need to start, need to get him back on the rotation and come in and do some school board reports. I'm not sure.
I think that'd be great.
That's true, but, and he's definitely open to it. One of the things he shared that I thought was really nice and I wanted to share with you is that the average grade point of our student athletes is over three point four. It varies a little bit from season to season, but generally the lowest is the point average.
That's fantastic. That is outstanding. It's difficult to be an outstanding student while participating in multiple extracurricular activities. Time organization and all of those sort of life lessons. And it's, it's eye-opening to have a, you know, granddaughter that's working her way through the middle school and her first year of high school. It's, things are going well. Things are going very well.
Well, I think maybe it's also really helpful that so many of the coaching staff and assistant coaching staff are teachers and support staff within the schools, because then athletes have the availability to do that and seek out help when needed. And there's such a different relationship there, which I think is pretty fantastic.
That's always a preference. Because it's just difficult to find certain coaching spots that are also teachers.
Oh, absolutely.
That is ideal. That's the ideal situation.
Share some pictures from around the district a little bit and then talk about some upcoming things. You can see the students here, kindergarten students, they're doing a little sight word, right? Remember those sight words? A snowball. So I'm guessing like you wrote out sight words and then you coupled them up and threw them and then probably if you picked them up, you had to say the sight word.
I love that idea.
Look at the ones in the background of the third picture.
Yeah, yeah, right. That's kind of a fun idea. I see a little, little mini karate lesson going on in a physical education class there.
Look at that gorgeous floor.
Can I ask you a question? This is a karate instructor, maybe he owns one of the karate places.
Looks like it, yeah.
Do they send information home promoting their own business?
I don't know. I would guess not.
I would hope not, you know?
Yeah, I don't.
Sometimes they put it in the newsletter or something.
It could be in the newsletters, you know?
Yeah, newsletter is fine.
Yeah.
I don't think so. Not to my knowledge, that's what I should say.
That's so cute.
There, it'll be twins day, her and the student. I love that picture. See some other twins here at Wabesa, some staff, some little spirit week before winter break. You got, you gotta do some fun stuff right before break to keep people interested, so you can see Mr. Shep, Shep and his brunette and then the library staff.
Dress up days are a blast for everybody.
Yeah.
Anybody who's a monitor in the school, it's hilarious.
But this was really fun. The fifth grade orchestra students went around and played in various places throughout Wabesa. The office, lunchroom, and some different classrooms, so one of the neat things to share with the kids. We had a little, we had a record on the end of the era. Photo booth for the middle school.
And her birthday. Quite a phenomenon.
Yes. The one of the things in middle school, it's a long tradition of this, is right before winter break, having to drop everything and read day. So kind of get comfy, find a good spot in the room, have a good work and, and so just kind of a neat tradition.
Sounds nice.
That sounds magical.
And what's the duration of that, Erin?
What's that?
How long does that last?
It varies each year, so I don't know how long this year is, but my recollection is like around forty-five minutes.
Okay. We used to do it at the primary school, every day for fifteen minutes.
Yeah. And we used to do it at the middle school for, I think, like twenty minutes or so during the advisory time. Once a week, we used to, but now because we have the blocks of another thing, we just don't move into that time. So one of the things that we, this extra special is all the staff participate. I always do, too. But this was really neat and I'd like to find out some more about it. I don't know the details, but you have our very own Lizzie, Lizzie Molly and students as part of their capstone project in college coming in to work with our students. So here, she's a biomedical engineering student and doing an outreach activity. So some kind of, some hands-on learning here with our students, so a chance to design a prosthetic arm.
It's great.
So cool.
You know, when alumni comes, comes back and engages with the current kids.
I think that's why, you know, if we could keep track of our graduates during their college experience, because someone has to know what they're going into, maybe what year they're, contacting them. Because I think a lot of them would be willing to come back, we just have to ask.
Yeah, they just had a group here at the high school that last meeting, I think, right after graduation. They come back, they have a panel.
Oh, okay.
Of graduates that come and they talk about their experience and give advice.
Interesting. The trades, yeah.
Here we have DECA. We talked about this last time. It's just about this usually young entrepreneurial event. So I'm really proud of that. I can't see enough pictures of that.
Boy, are they rolling.
Yeah.
Wow.
Good stuff for our youngest, our youngest kids. We had our December winner here, Aubrey Burke of the Student Employee Excellence Award. So great thing that, that the Chamber of Commerce supports and our business education partnership team supports. They're so well-deserved and have family there, their employer. Surprise them during lunch. Mentioned this last time, too. I don't know if we had a picture from it, from the poli sci classes when they had their legislative summary and very old state senator, Caldo Royce spoke. So the event first year in McFarland.
And she just got appointed to that committee.
Yeah, the education.
Yeah, that's really great.
Yeah, that's really important. I mentioned before about Future Quest, DECA just doing volunteer events, helping five thousand middle schoolers. Woo, that sounds.
Wow.
There's four different middle students. I don't know if you saw the video, there was a video on social media about this, too, about our Blue Nels in there. There's snow tour, so you can see some of the places listed here that they went to. I was meeting with somebody and coming through the district office as well. Very fun. Very great job, beautiful woman.
The rotunda is acoustically quite a place. You can just live in there and sing, it's really neat.
I'll have to do that. Coming up, we have listening sessions, superintendent listening sessions are coming up. I have three this week and then next week and that's with our staff. So just a chance for them to kind of ask questions, share their thoughts, concerns with me. And then our student survey will be coming up and that's grades four through twelve. So we started that last year and that just gets their anonymous feedback on how they're doing and how their learning is going and what we can do better. Some things coming up, of course, we have a meeting tomorrow night is when you're, you're going to evaluate me. Then we have the Greater Dane County School Governance Consortium meeting in Monroev that will be held on Wednesday. Also, that's the Seventh and Eighth Day at night. Thursday is our First Citizens Facility, Citizens Advisory Facility Naming Committee meeting. And we'll be talking about that yet tonight. The high school's having an assembly this Friday to recognize Dr. Martin Luther King.
What time is that?
Three oh five, I think, is when advisory starts. So right around three.
So it's a all, all-school assembly?
Yeah, for the high school here in the PAC. And that's led by our student council, so appreciate their leadership. Then we have the State Education Convention next week that some of us are going to. The semester ends next week. We have Professional Development Day on the twenty-fourth. And then it's Lunar, Lunar New Year on the twenty-ninth. And then we'll have another Facilities Naming Committee on the twenty-ninth. And then the middle school musical. So that'll be January thirty.
Bye-bye birdie, right? Just got the email for tickets. Loan me some bye-bye birdie.
Got our tickets today.
And then in February is, of course, Black History Month, Kindness Month, and CTE Month. And we'll also, the day that we have our next board meeting, which is February thirty, there's a high school orchestra concert. It's also the start of National School Concert Week. So those are all the things I had to share. Do you all have any recommendations you want to share?
I already brought it up, but wanted to recognize Ginger and all of her work with DECA. I had never been a judge for DECA before. I had never been a judge for DECA before. I was in DECA though, when I was in high school. And I, I actually got compliments on Ginger from other teachers. That were in charge of their DECA programs about what an amazing job she's doing. And I do know that we had quite a few students medal and that will be going on to state. Which is at the end of February in Lake Geneva. But just seeing what, like, I got to see all the cute, like, freshmen and sophomores do their presentations and it was adorable. And seeing as how, I'm, I'm in sales, I actually, I wanted to like hire some of them because they were that good. But no, they were just so professional and I did actually get to see all the McFarland students at the end and they were so excited and they were just so well presented. So I'm excited to see who moves on and to see how well they do in state because we always have great kids that, you know, go far in DECA. So kudos to Ginger.
Absolutely.
And if anybody wants to judge at the state DECA meets, I will forward you the email because they always need judges. No experience necessary, they tell you exactly what to do and it's really fun. Please do.
And there's a difference one school to another.
Yeah, so like.
In terms of their.
Like you could see the level of leadership from an advising perspective from student or from school to school. But I think there was over five hundred kids just at our district. Like, it, it was huge. Like, I personally, myself, interviewed ten students in two hours doing role plays. And they literally have no idea what they're doing. They show up and they have ten minutes to prepare. Basically a speech.
Walking cold.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to do it.
I mean, I'll, I'll admit, like, some kids brought visual aids because I was an HR manager, so they brought me, like, the parking lot map. And they brought me the employee handbook and they went through the whole thing and I was like, wow, okay. Like, I don't, I don't even have an employee handbook, you know? So no, it, it was pretty great to see.
They're passionate about this stuff. I mean, there's no, there's no lack of, they are serious about being good at what they want to do.
Well, and so some of the McFarland students, they did presentations on, like, retail merchandising and apparel. And did they show up? I mean, their fits were on point. I mean, they looked awesome. They, they were so well representative of McFarland, so, yeah. Yes.
Yes, true.
The fits.
I knew that.
I, I figured that out.
I'm trying to get down with my slang.
Thank you for translating.
But once again, that's a reflection of providing different opportunities for different kids. So they can find a special, unique interest area that they can excel in.
Exactly.
And, you know, I don't know if it's ten years ago, but it's, it's a number of years ago, that was just about gone. We just about didn't have a DECA program. And then Ginger came in and.
Was that?
With it into shape.
Was that when Cindy was here? Or before Cindy?
Always before that.
That was before.
Yeah, I think it was before Cindy came.
There was like ten kids.
In fact, Cindy wasn't involved.
Yeah, that's what I would think. So we're talking about maybe twenty-five years ago?
Yeah, probably.
Thirty?
All right, business managers report. Mr. Mahoney.
The exciting conclusion to another audit season.
It is exciting.
Which starts right back up in about four months.
You got about two months break and you got to start all over again.
Well, yes, this is my annual time.
To join you, you do have two documents that are part of your board book. One is the required communications that go directly to the board and I'll kind of comment on some of those. And then also the larger binder that I think last year, most of you, I walked everybody kind of through. That if you get into the notes section, there's a lot of really good information about the financials of our school district. So with that first, the smaller packet that was attached in your board book this evening. I, again, I guess before I dive into that, again, Carrie Roberts is our lead. This is the lead part of her job is to be responsible for organizing and communicating with our auditors. She does our accounting work. But in addition to her, Angie Straub, Sandra Young, Serena. Erin gets interviewed. I don't know if you got interviewed this year. All of our building administr, administrative assistants are heavily involved from the student activity account side of things. So there are a lot of people involved in this and it does truly last about nine months from when we start to finish. One thing I'm proud of is that we continue to retain, and that sounds weird, but we retain Johnson Block as a auditor. They've had difficulties with other school districts and they've dropped them. There is competition for good districts and those that are not get really high prices, so. It's great. We, we've had a good relationship with them, so consistency makes it a little easier to meet up with the auditors. So on the second page of the document I shared with you, they had the pieces that are supposed to be for you and you only. Please feel free to read through this at any time and give me a shout. What I just kind of wanted to comment about is, you know, right from the start, right at the top. They always say they have to use these words. We previously communicated significant risks with you. But if you go back to the previous documents we've had, there were no new significant risks have been identified. So that has been the trend of our district, you know, for my last twenty-one years and I think it's not went away is that we don't have significant issues. Partly because of the work that we do throughout the year, the action items that you have at the board level. There are no surprises because that's one of the best things about our financials. Is our financials tie back to board meetings. And our, that includes staffing levels, staffing contracts, stuff like that. So making sure that you have the strong policies as you do. And then always having those reports that, you know, you approved this evening. That's all important, so. You know, they said, well, we have previously communicated significant estimates to you. Well, again, no new significant estimates have been identified. Again, that goes back to the procedures we use mostly for budgeting. That, you know, we are monitoring our budgets throughout, we're updating with you throughout the years.
Whatever thing comes back through the board, that allows things that happened at some other districts not to happen here.
Right.
I mean, I, I don't know how to better say it, but because everything is tied back to specific events. It, it greatly reduces the chance that there's anything.
Right.
Any misinformation.
Has it always been that way at McFarland?
Yeah, I mean.
Since you've probably been here.
Well, before I arrived here, I mean, Patty Bredel had been the accountant for about a decade prior to me arriving. And then when Patty was about to retire, we took Carrie from Accounts Payable and asked her to learn and go into the accounting, she is, already was an accountant, but. So we've just had good procedures of making sure that our board has the financials that they need. And also having a auditing firm that, I mean, yes, we know Quinn very well. But there are days you're ready for her emails to go away. And or her conversations with us, but, you know, just sticking to our policies and procedures. And making sure, like even the high school today was curious about a fundraiser that they were unclear would really meet our standards. They could have easily just went ahead with it because it's not too far off. But they're like, wait a minute, it doesn't follow what we do for fundraising and our procedures for fundraising and how that goes through. So that's really cool because I don't think that happens in every school district where the associate principal, hey Jeff, can you just stop over? This just came up. You know, so again, all around, it's making your staff, your administration, your board aware of there's rules. If we follow them and keep to our procedures, we can rock and roll. Bottom of the page two, we countered no significant difficulties in dealing with management relating to the performance of audit. On page three, management has identified all misstatements or corrected all misstatements. You know, a misstatement for auto auditor jingo means you've corrected the numbers to the way they're supposed to be or coded. Not that, you know, Jeff said, whoa, we really spent that money wrong. So. Yeah, I mean, just overall, again, a great audit. I don't want to spend too much time because you may have some questions, comments. And then as always, you can follow up with me at any time, or Carrie.
They are thorough.
Yes, certainly are.
I, I up to and including a phone call, you know, from our auditors to me. And, and what they're interested in is are there any, you know, fraudulent goings on? You know, where, where, if, if you were to have a problem of this sort, where might it be? You know, that kind of stuff. But that's a relatively short conversation, but I, I've always appreciated the fact that they made that call. You know, they are extremely thorough. Every, every year, at least I've been here. It's, I hate to use the word perfect, but we've had, you know, audits with basically no mistakes in it. Or no questions from the accounting firm.
Or if we did, very minor.
Yeah, and there are things that change that we just don't even realize are changing with particularly Gatsby statements. That seem to pop up and come about and, you know, it's, it's process. You know, while not super related to this, but super related to our financials. You know, our banking partner, One Community Bank continues to strengthen their security pieces for us. We continue to always have our banking safety lens on. We're always having to watch for phishing, which is, you know, for instance, if you want to, if you want to change your bank account, you need to show up and sign a document. Like, you can't just work through email with us. You know, we need the phone call and then we call back.
Yeah.
So we, we've had probably about three or four phishing scams with legitimate people's names. And almost all awaited the process of someone falsifying a docu-sign that, you know, they're very.
God.
So, you know, just call your bank if you ever need help.
Well, it's, it's, it's obviously extremely advantageous in terms of what our priorities are. As a board, you know, you, you see what happened, you know, in neighboring districts. And just because of the way we do things, we can guarantee that that would never happen here. It can't. And for a board not to have to worry about that kind of stuff with all the other things going on, that's a blessing. And it's, you know, kudos to Jeff and his team because they're the ones responsible for that perfect audit every year that the board doesn't have to worry about. We're confident that we can sign off on the documents that are brought to us through Jeff's work.
Also, we've had a really good audit as well, so like I also have to review their documentation that comes to us. They also use the same auditors. That's been kind of nice in the last few years, so we also exchange a lot of money back and forth.
And I would say, I, I wouldn't say would never happen because you just never know. But I think the way we monitor things throughout the whole year, you know, the likelihood of something happening is pretty slim.
Yeah, it's good stuff.
Yeah, I would, I will say, with this being my jam, quote unquote. It is very, I mean, I'm second, I'm echoing everything that you all are saying. But it really is rare to continue to have an audit report that is like this without any major findings. Without any major risks identified. Yeah, it's very, this is very high quality work from Jeff and his team.
But, but you heard me say it before, we have the right people in the right place. Thanks.
I'm just trying to do like you guys as students do at the DECA competitions.
Be awesome.
Yeah, so just kind of going back to the DECA, it, the program did get down to about seven kids. And when Ginger took over, by her fourth year, which would have been my niece's. She went off to nationals, the first year that they went off to nationals, so. Heidi's running a aggregate company that does stonework up in Fond du Lac. So, you know, you, you have, and at the same time, her genius sister is in science and is running a lab out in Boston. At age twenty-four.
Wow, okay.
The variety that this place has offered is very far off. You have a scientist and a business marketing person.
Public education.
So anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah. Opportunities. Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Okay. Action items. Action on twenty twenty-five, twenty-six open enrollment policy. Approval for space availability in the schools, programs, classes, or grades. Description, January thirteenth, school board meeting, open enrollment per McFarland School Board Policy. Administration recommends approval of the following action items for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six open enrollment. I would look for a motion to approve space availability in the schools, programs, classes, or grades within the school district using the following criteria.
I can make that.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, should I read that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I move to approve the space availability in the schools program, schools, programs, classes, or grades within the school district using the provided criteria.
And I will second.
I think that was.
Discussion.
I do have an issue with that, about, stated upfront that I will, I will vote yes to approve it. But I do so very reluctantly, knowing how increasing the number of students in homerooms and other areas may negatively impact student achievement, student behavior, student teacher relationships, which is probably the most significant one for me, teacher stress, school climate. And once again, we as a board is adding, we're adding to the plate of sta, staff instead of trying to take things off their plate. I think that's always a concern that how much more can we add on to a teacher's plate? I guess that's all I'll say about that.
Okay.
Do the, I guess, so to follow up to that, how much do these open enrollment recommendations move us past the optimal class sizes that we've set up?
So they don't.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
So the, the reason that we have open enrollment spaces is because of our declining enrollment. And so what they do is they allow other people to choose to come to the district that don't live in the district. To make sure that we're able to maintain the staff that we currently have. Because without adding open enrollment students, then we have classes that are, we have fewer students, which means we have less revenue, which means we have additional budget.
And sometimes we drop classes. And Tom, though, I respect your, your opinion because of your long-term involvement in education. From my experience as a teacher, it didn't make a whole lot of difference. Whether I had, I mean, I had classes where I had thirty-one, thirty-two kids. I also had classes that were eighteen. I also think the diversity that they bring into the school district is also valuable. So I think there's, there's just different ways you can look at it. I just think, I think we're on top of what we're trying to do and I think it's just something that we should do, so. I just think, I think we're on top of what we're trying to do, and I think it's just something that we should do, so.
I also think it's important, just because we have the space, doesn't mean we're necessarily going to get all those additional kids as well. So I think it's important to approve it so we have that capability. I always say it's better to have it and not need it than want it and not have. If that makes sense.
And I certainly understand the rationale for it. Yeah, because having been employed here for years, you know, open enrollment has saved us as a district, and we've been able to actually keep teachers in classrooms. But again, you know, for us, you know, go, go into a four K, five K, up to grade five classroom, one or two students does make a difference. But I understand why we have to do this.
Yeah, I, I, um, I do agree with you, Tom. I think if, if it were, um, and I, I think we've heard time and time again, staff are just overloaded, right, with current. So if it were taking us above our optimal class sizes, then I think it would, it would feel different. And then to your point, Megan, maybe it, it wouldn't even take us up to that necessarily, but, um, then I think it feels different, you know, but, yeah, it's a good point.
It's sort of like, you know, having a family, growing up in a family with ten siblings. I mean, that's a class in itself almost versus a neighbor's having a, you know, just four or five kids. Ten. But, you know, that comparison, it's, it's real.
It is.
How much time your parents or the teacher can spend with each child.
And if we already covered this, I apologize, did we get feedback from any of the staff regarding open enrollment? That they were against it?
Last year, there were only opened up spots. There were quite a few questions because we just haven't had it in a while. They were concerned about an increase in class sizes, and I think that's not what happened, you know, people didn't see increased sizes because of open enrollment. And, you know, like, Tom and I have been a part of the district in our leadership role. It was, I think, like seventeen percent at some point of our students were open.
Three hundred and thirty-one.
Yeah, I know.
So we're kind of, you know, that's what we, we're familiar with. And so when you have at the time where ultimately we'd all like to see lower class sizes, however, there does become a point where a class could be too small that you miss that. You know, I think that's, that's sort of getting to your point, is like, you know.
And I think there's a difference between an elementary classroom versus when the school and high school classroom. Based on the individual needs and maturity level or lack of maturity level by, by some students.
And that is why our target class sizes.
Again, I'm just gonna argue that there are some high school classes where a lot of writing and grading, I don't know, it can make a huge difference, one or two kids, but it's just part of it. I, I thought the, the, the material that you included in our minutes from, I think that's where it was, where Melissa sent the studies and they looked at it, and I, I strongly agreed with what she had put on there. That would have been my, my take on the situation as well.
And I'm familiar with the STAR Committee specifically, because that was done seventies, early eighties. Huge difference now. The profile of students coming into the classroom is vastly different than when they came from one, uh, two-parent families. There's a high level of respect. You know, parents backed the teachers, you know, you, you know the whole thing versus today. It's just vastly different. So as far as I'm concerned, that research is old research, but that's the best that we can go on.
It's outdated and there's just nothing new.
I, I'd say it can be different, but it doesn't have to be, and I think some of those kids see this as an opportunity. And they may be some of the kids who are most highly motivated to do well in this district. So I, I, I don't know, I just have a, I think we're gonna be just fine.
Can I just remind the board that this one in particular, we have to have a policy? And if we were to vote this down and say we don't have any room, which we've already went through this legally several times, we would lose our challenge and we would not be able to then adhere to a limit that we've put in place. So, this, these policy decisions, and this has been the same policy that Mr. Brown and I developed about twenty-one years ago. And I think we did really well the last twenty years of this because we've already made it through legal challenges, even though we do have some extra classrooms on top of our eight-track goal, which then supports all of our related arts, because if you don't have eight-track, pretty soon you can't support all the related arts at full-time.
And I just want to make it clear that I'm not opposed to the policy. I'm just supporting the policy reluctantly.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Moving on. Per board policy, the board is permitted to include pupils who are currently attending school in the non-resident school district and pupils attending the school district for whom tuition is paid by another school district under S dot one-two-one dot seven-eight-one A. The school board shall approve guaranteed currently attending pupils. Do I have a motion?
I can move to grant guarantees for currently attending pupils and include currently attending pupils in the count of occupied spaces.
Thank you.
I will second that.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Action on twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six open enrollment policy. Preference versus guarantee for siblings of currently attending pupils. Uh, could I have a motion, please?
I'll do that. Um, I move to grant guarantees for siblings of currently attending pupils and include siblings of currently attending pupils in the count of occupied spaces.
I can second that.
Thank you, Megan. Discussion.
Jeff, I have a question about this. So if we have a open enrollment student here, we're gonna guarantee that their siblings could come in. What if their siblings are in, be enrolled in a grade level where we're at the optimal class size?
So if there is a student here and a student enrolls and it's in a grade level that doesn't have open, they can attend.
Can't attend.
They can.
As long as there's an opening or it doesn't matter?
No, it doesn't matter.
So it's sort of saying if one of the kids gets in via an open space, the siblings are able to attend. And we started that last year.
I was gonna say.
As long as the student is currently attending.
Yes.
So it's not like if, so if like a family wants to get both, two of their kids in and there's room for one but not room for the other.
Have to wait a year.
Have to wait a year, okay.
The one has to start.
I don't know about another way to do it.
No, there isn't.
Well, for a while, we did not guarantee.
But you made best efforts.
Was getting difficult.
Families.
Yeah, at that point, the policy was if there's space, then you can come, and if there's not space, even if your sibling's here.
Any other discussion?
No, it seems like it's good for families, so.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Per board policy, the board is permitted to include siblings of pupils who are currently attending school in the non-resident school district and siblings of pupils attending the school district for whom tuition is paid by another school district under S one-two-one dot seven-eight-one A. The school board shall approve or guarantee siblings of currently attending pupils. Do I have a motion?
I think, hopefully, because I'm lost otherwise. Don't worry about it.
I think we're on the
Are we at nine D?
We are.
Okay, all right. I would look for a motion then to approve the action on five, on twenty-five, twenty-six open enrollment policy.
I can do that.
Process to fill or name spaces.
I'll, I'll read it. I move that the board will create a random selection waitlist for each grade with space avail- availability. I'll second.
Thanks, Tom. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, everyone. Next is action on second reading and adoption of policies. Do we want to go through these individually? Or are we gonna, can we approve them en masse?
I think since the second reading, we don't, unless someone has something they want to pull out, I think we usually do.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. So.
I, I move to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policies as recommended by administration. Twenty-three forty field and other district sponsored trips. Fifty, fifty-three thirty administration of medication, emergency care. Fifty-four thirty class rank. Fifty-four sixty graduation requirements. Fifty-six ten dot O three alternatives to expulsion and reentry plans. Sixty-four twenty-three use of credit cards. Seventy-five forty dot zero five assisted, assistive technology and services. Seventy-five forty-four use of social media. Eighty-three ninety-five student mental health services. Eighty-five hundred food services. Eighty-five thirty-one free and reduced price meals. Eighty-six hundred transportation. Eighty-six forty transportation for field and other district sponsored trips. Eighty-six sixty transportation by private vehicle, vehicle for district sponsored activities or trips. Eighty-six eighty transportation services contracts. Fifty-two hundred dot zero one full-time student. Fifty-six forty dot zero five inside school of Wisconsin high school graduation requirements.
Could you just read those one more time?
I, I only like stumbled a couple times.
You did a great job.
What was the third one you said?
It was class rank.
I would look for a second.
I'll second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Action on McFarland High School early graduation requests. I would look for a motion.
I'll move to approve the attached MHS early graduation requests as recommended by administration.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I can second.
Thank you, Megan. Discussion.
Again, I'll make a comment. I think I made it previously. I, I'd like to see a template that students follow for their early graduation request.
For, you mean for their letter request?
To a letter or?
Well, well, if you take a look at the letters that we've received in the past, they, they, they're, I would rank them as excellent to not, not good at all. Yeah, because they lack information. And I think, uh, I'd like to see probably, uh, staff get together and say, okay, let's create a template. And they might want to ask us what we want included in that template, but at least it'd be a common template. So as these requests come through, there's similar categories at least. These are all over the place right now. I think it's, it's a, a significant request that students should make. And they can use AI if they want, but I guess a template would be easier for me to, you know, comprehend what's being asked here. I'm not sure how the others feel about that.
No, I think, um, I remember that you suggested that, and I think it's a great suggestion. I think it's, um, you're right, it is a really big request. And we know that they've worked with their counselor to get to that point, but I think it would be great to have a little bit more information about
Background?
Background, yeah, I mean, or just what, what the process is and go, and what the counselor has discussed with them.
Even plan for the future.
And like what they've learned during their time and like things like that, like one key takeaway.
Would be in a position, you know, to lead them through to that and to make sure that we don't offer it, you know, indeed. And to make sure that all the requirements have been met.
And if, and if there's a reason why, um, Student Services doesn't want to enforce a template or encourage a template, I mean, there could be some reasons that they want it to be fully developed by the students, then, you know, let us know that. But I think a template would be nice. Or just a list of information that we want to see.
Again, I don't want to make it cumbersome. I think it's more of an organizational request than anything else.
I was pleased that she, that the person, uh, did at least thank some, some teacher staff that had really helped.
Anything else? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Action on denial of student open enrollment status. At this time, we recommend the denial of one Indian Mountain Middle School student's open enrollment status for second semester of the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year due to habitual truancy, truancy during first semester of the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Two thousand nine Wisconsin Act three zero four states that a non-resident school board may notify the parent of a habitual truant that the pupil may not attend the non-resident school district in the following semester or school year. And please reference the attached recommendation memo. I would look for a motion to approve.
And can I, can I recuse myself from this?
Sure.
Because this is, involves a student that I actually work with.
Okay, okay, I get it. All right.
I'll move to approve the denial of open enrollment status for the Indian Mountain Middle School student as referenced in the attached memorandum effective at the second semester of twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year due to habitual truancy. The student will be transferred back to the resident district.
I can second that, Fessler. Just so Angie doesn't have to say it. Maybe we should just go last name from here on out.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I would, uh, I would say, of course, it's similar to what we talk about with the WEVA transfers. That it is sad to see. I wish it weren't happening. It is the first time in three years that I've seen this happen in my tenure here so far. But what I do appreciate is that, um, that we don't see with the WEVA transfers is the, um, the really detailed information about what the school district and what the, the staff did to work with this family to get engagement. And it's very clear that we did a lot to try to help keep, retain this student, so.
I would certainly concur with, with what you said, Megan. In fact, I can't ever recall where we've done this with a student. At least not in the six years I've been on the board.
Not in my memory.
Have there been many, Erin?
No. I've been involved in, I think this, this is the, probably the third middle school one. Some in high school. It's very, very rare. But it, but it does happen.
So let me ask you this, so he, this student is an open enrollment student. He's gonna go, he or she's going back to their home school district. Do they remain on our roles until the home district picks them up?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Right.
I was just gonna ask that, yeah.
Can the home district refuse?
No.
They have to allow them back.
The question is gonna be what's the home district gonna be, because the parents are in two different districts. So it's, it was very complicated.
Well, and it's hard, I think, in this, when it's, when it's a truancy issue, you know, you don't know what the home district is gonna be able to do that's different than what we could do, unless the home district is closer. And so maybe transportation, if that's the issue.
That's my argument with these, and that's been my experience as a school administrator was the, the extra step of the transporting physically from one place to another adds the, the extra step of the transporting physically from one place to another adds a hurdle.
Mm-hmm, for sure.
That if you have attendance issues, that just makes it that much harder because you, you have to get up that much earlier, you know, and that can be really difficult or, you know, people with their work and their plans and the change, they're responsible for transportation.
That was a lot of it. It was just.
It's unfortunate. It's really probably not the student's.
I will say, I, I was, I was also really impressed with the length that the administrators and the support staff would go to help this student be success, be successful. Because just looking over some of these notes, like, at one point I was like, wow, like, they're, they're really doing everything they possibly can.
That's not atypical here.
No, and that's only, that's only this year. Believe me, it's gone stretch for quite a while.
Well, I just want to be careful you don't, you know, disclose anything about us then, but, you know, I do think that, um, the reason why we have had these come forward before is because a lot of times those are successful, those parents are successful.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it's time.
Okay.
Well, hopefully this kid does better elsewhere.
Anything else? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four zero. Action on Citizens Advisory Facilities Naming Committee Membership. I would look for a motion to approve.
I move to approve the Citizens Advisory Facilities Naming Committee Members as recommended by administration.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. If you wanna.
Who seconded that was?
It was.
Sorry, I'm coming.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay, so hello, everyone. I'm here to tell you about this, you know, those that have been in the board for a minute. Um, you're involved in the Human Growth and Development Conference at all. Uh, that was when we had an advisory committee for that. This is a little bit different and I'm gonna walk through some of this. I just think it's important as we move forward with this group for the public to understand as well what we're talking about here. So this document that you have and I'm sharing on the screen lays out, first of all, just the background, you know, and how this started in, in April of two thousand twenty-three, um, and how it's progressed since that point. Um, the board had, had advised about a committee being formed and had asked about a committee being formed. Um, then at one point, the board said, actually, can we get a little more historical information? Um, and then let's decide if we want to continue with, with the advisory committee. And so we did and presented that information, um, to the board. A, a student Riley Brown and I did that in, in December of two thousand twenty-three, so a year ago. And then the board had, had felt like right now we are engaging the community with the referendum and there are costs associated with a possible renaming that would make it prohibited at this point. And so we, we paused the work there and now, um, we are restarting it. And so the process that we've laid out for you, you know, ultimately what the goal is, is for this to get in front of the board, to have the committee make a recommendation to the board prior to any change in board membership, which will happen, um, in April. So we're looking at, uh, four meetings, first of which would be this Thursday. And then, um, looking at the group then presenting to the board in, in March and the board making the decision. And linked in here the relevant policies, which are also included in full in this document. Talking about really that, that board's role is to make a recommendation, um, or the committee's role is to make a recommendation and then the board can do whatever the board chooses, um, in terms of accepting what they're recommending, changing it. Um, their job is to make a recommendation about whether or not the name should be changed. And then if the board decides that, yes, we feel like the name should be changed, then we will initiate a renaming process that would come after that. But if the board says, no, we're gonna keep the name as is, then we would not initiate a process. Um, so it talks about the membership and we'll, we'll, we'll go over that a little bit here. Um, it's important that, it's gotta be a committee that, that represents our residents, our students and staff with staff members constituting a minority of the committee. So kind of looking at a twelve to sixteen member thing and we'll talk about that. I put some initial numbers in here when we were doing the planning, you know, five to seven community, three to five students, um, and one or three staff. Board members may attend, um, and to observe, similar to the Human Growth and Development Committee or Strategic Planning Committee, but just know that, you know, your presence may impact people's willingness to share. Uh, the recruitment process posted throughout the community, um, tried to get word out as much as we could. Um, certainly sent it to students and families. And then, um, looking at the structure of, of the meetings. The first meeting, which will be this Thursday, if you approve the membership this evening, that is where we'll share the history as we know it, basically what we presented to you in December of two thousand twenty-three. And then ask that group, what more do you need? And if we can find that information with local resources, we will do that. If we need to go outside of what we're able to provide, um, and that we'll need to estimate the cost of what that would take and determine if there are resources to support that, that work. And then ultimately, it's about going back and gathering meetings and what do we need and making decisions. The big thing with, with this issue and, and some of the feedback that I've received is being really thoughtful about, okay, this is what we know, this is what we don't know and can find out, this is what we don't know and will never know, because there's some of that there. Um, but in all of that too, also keeping in mind the historical context of the time it's all looking at. This wasn't three years ago. Um, so that, that is important and, and those that have expressed interest in the group have, have shared that.
What time is that meeting?
That's at six o'clock.
Six? And you will be attending?
I will be attending, yes. Yeah, I, I will be there.
Is that here?
Yes.
In this room?
It will be here in this room, yes. Um, and so in terms of looking at, um, committee members, we had, um, thirteen people express interest in joining the committee. Um, when I, when I then, I reached out to all thirteen and one person withdrew just because of scheduling conflicts. Um, and so then bringing forward the remaining names to you for approval. It, thankfully, um, it, it meets the criteria of the committee. So there are two staff members, two students, and then the remaining are, are committee members. Um, so it has that, that configuration. You can see the members, um, that we're recommending coming forward here. I will still need to identify a chair, uh, that's to be a committee member from the group. I've reached out to, to one member and they haven't heard back. Well, we'll get that done in short order. The board does not need to vote on the chair, just on the members. So, you know, if there's any discussion, because in a discussion phase, motions.
No, I just really, it's amazing because it's a lot of time that these people are gonna be devoting to this and I just want to thank them all. And Riley Brown, who's been very.
Yeah.
Very patient. That's really nice.
Yeah, I, it's, um, I think if we're, you know, as, as long as we're making sure that multiple different viewpoints are represented, then, you know, that's, that's what we aim for. It is hard.
That's hard because you don't know going in.
Right.
You know, what, what you can see notions are.
I mean, I do know a handful of people on the committee. Um, I probably know about half. And I, I think they're very well, they would be very good appointees of this committee.
I think the challenge of the committee is to remove the preconceived notions.
Mm-hmm.
So they take an unbiased look at all the facts that will be presented.
That's an excellent point.
I know, Erin, when I went with Erin last week or week and a half ago, we were talking about this a little and I said, you know, I don't know where I stand. I need more information, but this really helps, Erin. Things are put together so far, everything that we've had.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, any new information that the committee decides that they need, you know, they'll share that with us.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
You know, and, and discussions, Erin and I have known all along, this is not gonna be a simple decision to be made. This is gonna be a controversial initiative as well as some of the others.
Mm-hmm.
So it's certainly to be taken seriously and, um, I, I think the process is set up thus far.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that you could change anything. I, I think we're gonna get, um, what we want and that's community input.
Mm-hmm.
Um, once again, I think, um, communications and transparency is, is gonna be key in order to, to make the process, to make sure everybody trusts the opinion of
Mm-hmm.
who's on the committee, but, but the decision at the end of the day comes down to the board.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's why, because it's been an ongoing issue, I think that's why we want to get it wrapped up before the board changes.
Mm-hmm. That makes sense.
I, I do, I, I do applaud Erin and the board also for putting this on pause for the past few months because that referendum for me was a high priority.
Yeah, for sure.
Uh, because we couldn't pause that at all, so I appreciate the timing of this, because we're picking it up right where we should now.
Yep, agreed.
And just to, uh, review, if and when it does come to the board, it's just a majority vote that will determine whether or not, what, what direction we go.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
You know, I think the first quarter of business is to decide that this is how we should begin. This is, is, uh, again, is, is gonna be a tough one.
I'm, I'm very comfortable with the membership as outlined here.
As am I.
Same.
Everybody?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do we need, anything else before we vote?
Does it have to be emotional?
We need action on the, we have to vote.
We already, we already made the motion. You have to vote, yeah.
Captain.
Yes.
Say.
Right. Okay, hearing no further discussion. All those, uh, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Action on recommended WEVA Destinations Career Academy and Inside Schools of Wisconsin, Wisconsin statute one-one-eight dot four-zero-eight G, student transfers to resident districts. At this time, WEVA Destinations Career Academy and Inside Schools of Wisconsin are requesting approval of recommended student transfers back to their resident districts due to lack of engagement. Uh, could I have a motion, please?
I'll move to approve the WEVA Destinations Career Academy and Inside School of Wisconsin recommended student transfers back to their resident districts due to lack of engagement.
Thank you. Fessler?
I can second.
Second, please?
I can second that.
Thank you, Bruce. Discussion?
My comment will be typical, I referred this before, but, but there's a big difference this time.
Yes, there is.
Uh, there is, uh, two kindergartners, one second and one sixth grader. And, and taking a look at elementary up to middle school now, up through middle school. What's different about this is that the three students between kindergarten and second grade, their parents actually attended the administrative conference, which doesn't happen often.
No, that's a wonderful.
That says a lot about the parents.
Yeah.
And I'm very, uh, optimistic that since WEVA staff and the parents communicated this, that the future of these students will continue to be in an educational setting.
Yeah, yep.
That's not always the case.
So I, uh, again, I applaud the staff at WEVA for their ongoing diligence in doing all they can to, uh, keep the students engaged, but also to these, uh, sets of parents.
Yep.
For fulfilling their obligation.
It's a significant commitment on the part of the parents from the get. You know, they, they'd make no bones about the fact that it isn't, it wouldn't be surprising if parents don't have to spend three to five hours a day.
Yeah.
Assisting, assisting these students just to make sure that they can stay abreast of what's current.
Easily.
So it's, that's, boy, you know, just thinking about that in today's environment. Major, major commitment.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero and I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Megan.
Fessler seconded that.
Fessler seconded? Okay, we'll go with that then. Let's see, Megan. Second, hold on, hold on. Okay, um, a motion has been made and seconded. Uh, all those in favor, please.
Can we have a discussion?
Yes.
I don't need any discussion.
Somehow I knew that was what, that was coming.
I'm ready to go home.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero and excellent job tonight, everyone. I appreciate your diligence.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got a lot done.
See you tomorrow.
Craig, what time? See you tomorrow.
I do have a new agenda.
Nine oh five.
I am working at, uh, Holy Wisdom Monastery. I am, as their director of finance.